All right, so now being 6 o'clock, I'll call the Monday, July 31st meeting of the Board of Selectmen to Order. And first item on the agenda, we have the 6 o'clock appointment with Chief Popsari and Kathy Crosby Bell, founder of the Last Call Foundation, presenting a safety grant to the company fire department. So turn it over to you two.
Okay, should it do that?
Do you guys want to...
Is it podium or...
Actually, why don't you take a microphone and you could even just sit at the table there.
Sure, oh, it'll go. Okay, wow, look at this, all right. Well, thank you for having us tonight. I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce you to Kathy Crosby Bell, who is founder of the Last Call Foundation. We reached out for grant applications to various places and we found her through firefighter Somro, Gary Somro, had heard about it. And Kathy's foundation is working what's called the Critical Needs Fund to help with safety issues for fire departments, not just beyond Boston Fire. And I'll let, I won't go too far, I'll let her explain a little bit about herself. So let me close my mouth and let Kathy talk a little bit about what she's all about. Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
So I started the Last Call Foundation after the fire on Beacon Street in Boston because I was, my eyes were open to the vast number of safety issues that firefighters face that go unfunded. Initially, we began with the Boston Sparks Association, Gary's a member, and that's how he reached out. And we bought a new A-10 truck for responses for long-duration fires. And we funded 25 extractors for the city of Boston in the firehouses because it's critical that firefighters are able to clean their gear. And I would urge you to check into that because it is really important for firefighters to have an extractor available to them that is limited use solely to cleaning their gear. It's, cancer in the fire service is unbelievable. It's going to cost you more to not provide it through your health plans than it will to provide it, and through training. So we did that with Boston and we funded the Firefighter Kansas Support Network Education Fund. So we are having a Train the Trainer go out around the region and they will train firefighters on what they should do to help prevent cancer themselves, what they can do. We moved on from there and we are funding research into fire hose. There's no reason in this day and age that fire hose should burn through as quickly as it does. It is, fires burn at 1,200 degrees, fire hoses fail often at 900 degrees. That's not acceptable. So we are funding that as well. One thing, as we roll our initiatives along, it became very clear to me that small towns have such critical needs that we can't ignore them. And there are firefighters who, for one reason or another, perhaps PTSD, whatever it is, whose health plans don't cover the services that they need. So these are the types of things that our Critical Needs Fund has been established for. We are attempting to fill that gap and help fund, for instance, in your town, it would be the air compressor, that's a critical piece of equipment. Firefighters have to be able to breathe in a fire. They should have that available to them at all times. So we're happy to be able to provide you with this check to do that. And the only thing that we ask of the town is that you take ownership. And in the event there's a repair required or replacement required, you understand that that is something that you should step up and do. That's all we ask. It's important to us because we understand that cities and towns' tax budgets are so, you have so many demands, and we understand that. We are attempting to put together a piece of legislation to help you with funding from other sources because we are terribly concerned, we're well aware, that one of the first things on the chopping blocks for funding, because you have so much, is the fire service. Okay? And it is really important to me, as the mother of a firefighter, to make sure that I do what I can to help ensure the safety of firefighters and help ensure that they make it to the end of their careers. It's really important that cancer be addressed, that their needs be acknowledged. There's so much that we expect of firefighters. They have to train for 70 or 80 different eventualities. And they will face most of them over the course of their career. So that training is vitally important. And so, because of that, Last Call Foundation has just included a, we have a pilot program for Fire Rescue TV. It is a service that will help train firefighters. It's important to me that small towns have access to this because I understand your training budgets are not what we would like them to be. So I was discussing it with your chief and we've decided to add you to that list as well. Okay? The only thing that will come of that is if after six months, you decide that the service is viable and it's something that you use and you need and you don't want to lose it, it will cost $20 a month to continue it. We'll pay for all of the equipment upfront. Okay? So we do want to be involved, we're attempting, but we've been inundated with so many requests. We are attempting to keep this sort of low-key, but I want to know if there's a firefighter without gear. I want to know that. And it sadly happens. So the air compressor really touched our hearts. One of my board members is married to a firefighter and she just put it right at the top of the list. And that's critical.
Wow, my goodness.
So, thank you all, you know, so much for listening and for supporting your firefighters. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And the piece of equipment that we're replacing is the oldest one in Plymouth County, it is 40 years old. And from an administration position, it's starting to neckle me to death. So this comes at the perfect time for this organization. I'm indebted to the Last Call Foundation forever for this huge thing you've done for us, we'll never forget that. Thank you so much. Awesome. Thank you Kathy.
You're welcome.
So if people wanted to contact you to help...
Actually, I have cards. I'll give them out to anybody who wants to help. We're having a gala in the fall. We're attempting to get some legislation written. We always love volunteers. We really need third-party fundraisers. As I was explaining to the chief, our biggest fundraiser thus far has been the Boston Marathon. However, we feel the need to portion a great deal of that money back to Boston because they worked so hard to get us those entries. However, we're starting to separate that a little bit because the critical needs just overwhelm everything else. And right now, Boston has a sympathetic administration and they're moving forward to replace all the things that have been ignored for 20 years, so.
So people Google "Last Call Foundation"?
LastCallFoundation.org.
Perfect.
Is it all private donations for the most part?
Yes. I apply for pretty much all the grants I can.
Okay.
We don't get a lot, but what we do get is attention to the needs of the fire service. We have been able to spread the word, 63% of firefighters over the course of their career will have a cancer diagnosis. And that's 2.5 to 3% higher than the average population. In Boston, it's 67%, something to do with the toxins in there, in the city. But it's ridiculous, the amount of dedication it takes from a firefighter to do this job on a regular basis. And truthfully, they are all heroes the minute they put that uniform on. And they go into places none of us would ever even consider. And, you know, I can't say enough about how much I'm amazed by the type of personality, the type of character that it takes to do that. And so, in my mind, every firefighter is a hero every day and we will all be judged on the way we treat our heroes.
I appreciate all the...
Absolutely.
Thank you so much Kathy. Thank you.
It'd be nice if you got some corporate sponsorship.
We have a couple. The Bruins are going to be involved with our Heroes Cup Hockey. And they are coming on board, we'll be announcing it at the gala. And we have a fire apparatus company coming on board. And we have, of course, the Firefighters Credit Union and things of that nature. So we are getting there. But truthfully, if you have a corporation in this town...
Yes, we do.
That you think, and what we try to do is, for instance, one corporation is out of Waltham, so they're going to sponsor a portion of our gala. The funds after the costs will go back to that town. So Waltham will get the benefit of those funds. And that's what we try and do. Get everybody involved and go back to the community that it came from.
Yes, wonderful.
How long have we been doing this?
Three years, since my son's death. He, Michael died March 26th, 2014. And September 26th, we launched Last Call Foundation. My friends were very supportive, they sat on the board, they helped us organize. We had Wilmer Hale wrote our articles of organization. We had so much support. And what struck me was that people are so supportive of families after a firefighter dies. And really, when we need their support is when the firefighters are alive. You know, that's when we need it. And so that's what we're attempting to do.
No, it's a great pause. That's wonderful that you were able to channel your grief into something that brings so much, such a needed assistance to all the cities and towns and the Commonwealth, so thank you.
She's a very courageous woman, very courageous and dedicated. Thank you Kathy.
If we could get a picture with you, with you, all our firefighters?
Sure.
Yeah, I think the paper would love to have that too.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Cover me up, I'm feeling like I gained 20 pounds.
Can you get everybody in?
Yeah, I got them all.
Good.
Perfect, thanks guys.
Thank you so much.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you so much for coming down.
You're welcome.
And this generous donation is truly appreciated. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you folks very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you chief. So here's a card for anybody who wants to volunteer or suggest someplace that I should call soliciting.
Okay.
Or sponsors.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good, thank you.
All right, so next on the agenda, we've got Community Paradigm Executive Search for Town Administrator Follow-Up, and you've had a very busy week.
So, we've got it scheduled, so now we'll let everybody talk and find out what they think. So it's basically Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday next week.
We've got a great group of people that have come forward to help us with this, so I think, you've got, you've touched on so many different department heads and it's going to be wonderful.
I had Tom Millis, Millis, because I thought...
You know, I had him on my list and I took it off and I, but it bothered me, I thought he just needed to be on there.
Yeah, he might add some insights.
Well, being a town administrator, right? Yes, one.
So anyways, we're in good shape on that.
Terrific.
Kudos from a distance, I know how hard it is to coordinate three people. You were coordinating probably three dozen, that's impressive work.
Very impressive. Well done. I almost put in one of your emails that, like a herding cat, you said it now with you all the time.
I bet you did.
Did I?
I purposely avoided that, but it's exactly what I was thinking.
Oh man, just when I saw that, I was like, all I could think of was you and herding cats, that was just, great job.
I'm going to go get my microphone.
Okay. Okay, next, Cisco abatement filing, discuss and vote on legal counsel to represent the town in Cisco versus Plimpton ATB, the tax abatement appeal. The assessors have asked us to determine who we're going to be using as counsel, they felt comfortable with both KP Law and Rich Bowen and wanted us to make a determination.
Why are they asking that? I mean...
Because I guess we pay the bill, so they were comfortable with both of them. Do you want to put it back on them?
Well, I just think that the expertise, we may have the financial wherewithal, but they have the expertise so-called.
Well, and they actually put out the kind of bid document, so they knew what they were asking for, we haven't seen any of this.
I haven't seen a thing.
Do you want them to make a recommendation?
I think so, I think so.
Okay.
A recommendation between those two.
Between those two? Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So can you ask Deb and the Board of Assessors to make a recommendation on who they would prefer based on all the information they received from the two firms as who would be most appropriate to represent the town in this abatement filing?
And we feel comfortable with both, so...
Think they're both good choices as well. But we didn't see what they submitted and this isn't our area of expertise. Do you know when they're meeting again? Is it next week?
Probably next one, probably next Monday.
Okay.
They're on the summer schedule also.
Yeah, so maybe they can vote next Monday?
Yeah.
Yeah, see if they can get it on their agenda and make a recommendation to us. All right, employment opportunities, fire clerk.
I understand Warren has six resumes now. He's probably down to two. Barbara and I will talk to those two as well, some of the things that we'd like to see from the operational, financial side. And hopefully we'll be able to make a decision, it's really his call, but I think we can add a little input into it.
Sure. And this position, the funding was effective, what, July 1st?
July 1st, 15 hours at $15.
Okay. Anything, are there any news on the Assessor Administrative Assistant?
I have not heard a thing.
I haven't heard anything either, you probably have not heard anything. Anything, Bree, on any applicants for that position?
I believe they had five the last time.
Oh, super.
I don't know if they started interviewing, I believe they did last week.
Okay.
But the ad was still going to be running for two more.
And they did change the ad, so it's an administrative assistant, not a senior clerk.
Okay, so it was more reflective of the position?
Which was what Wendy was.
Okay. All right, Fire EMS, hired the consultant?
Yeah, I kind of slipped on that, that'll be my next.
Well, we were going to hold off until Mark got back and schedule these companies.
We were thinking doing them the next two Selectmen's meetings, say at 6:00 and 8:00, we have four candidates. If they push back, because, you know, one's coming from New Hampshire, they're all quite ways, would it make sense to do Monday, Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday with that network? I'll try for six and eight Mondays because we're here anyways.
I prefer the Mondays, I can do the Tuesdays.
Well, I prefer Mondays too because it will be taped.
Okay. All right.
We could get, do you want the meeting, you can get another meeting tape for Tuesday if you want it.
For one hour, I don't know, but let me see if I can work the Mondays and see what they say.
Okay, that sounds great. All right, Solar, I don't know if we've got any updates?
No, the CEC representative was away, I think through the end of this week, and I was away. I'll have to light a fire this week and everybody.
You know, we get this solar energy smart program from KP and update. And quite frankly, something like this, I think, it's fairly technical, I didn't understand everything. I think at times we should ask them to come in and tell us, what does this mean in English?
In general, or this one in particular?
Yeah, I, you know, I hate to just file it because there may be something in here I should know. But reading it, I was kind of shaking my head at the end.
Well, actually, there's now been changes to the marijuana law.
Right.
So maybe we could get them in to talk to us about that, and solar, and any other changes to the law. All right, I'll reach out to Greg and see if we can set him up. You want to do it on an off night or a Monday?
We can do it as part of Monday, yeah.
Okay, all right.
And again, it would be taped if any of the departments want to see it, if they want to come.
All right, I'll see if I can get him on the agenda. I don't know what our availability is going to be because of what you're trying to set up.
Yeah, so we're probably talking maybe a month.
Yeah, maybe three weeks, three to four weeks.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I'll try to schedule three to four weeks out. Okay, Townhouse Communication Meeting, follow-up on memo sent to all departments. John wrote a nice memo letting everybody know what we're going to be doing.
Did we hear back from people? I know we had Kent Thompson and one or two others.
Whatever fire you lit last week caused people to respond.
Oh, they did, okay. I didn't see it, so I, I know they were supposed to respond to you, so I just wondered.
Well, they were CCing all of us on the ones that you had sent.
Okay.
Up to that point, they were replying and I only had five people.
That's, that's a good start.
Go with what we got.
And that's eight, nine, right?
Yes.
Okay. At 6:00, I think it was, or was, no, at 7:00. So let people get a chance to get here.
Maybe we send out a reminder the beginning of next week, just because it's easy to get a little distracted.
Well, you have the other, some people are going to be coming for the other meeting with Bernie.
Yeah, well, I think those are in the morning though.
They're all morning ones.
US one, it was listed as seven.
Okay, seven, thank you.
I want people to get confused on the two.
They're all morning.
Okay, all right. So do you want to work up a reminder, Bree? Perfect. Because that is next week.
We came this Wednesday, nine days.
Okay. All right, anything before we move on to correspondence?
I don't think so.
Okay, all right.
So I'm back about an hour ago, so I think I have this under control. So this is the final report on the paving of Main Street from County Road to Ring Road for $106,000. And I think we, Jim O'Kay, he has reviewed and signed and we just need to sign. So I'll pass this down. This is a communication from the Massachusetts Municipal Association. It's titled, "If I were elected leader of my community, I would make a difference by..." This is, the Massachusetts Municipal Association is running a couple of contests. One is a poster contest for third graders, the other is a statewide essay contest for eighth graders. Essentially, this is asking us to approve them sending this information to our school system so that our students can participate. Again, the title is, "If I were elected leader of my community, I would make a difference by..."
That's terrific.
So I think, I don't know if we all sign this, I guess maybe I'd just make a motion that we go ahead and fill in this form that allows MMA to contact our school system.
So it would be the Denit and Silver Lake and it'd be their choice whether or not they wanted to participate, but that we certainly support it.
That's it.
Okay, all in favor? All right, excellent.
So maybe I can pass that down to Bree?
Sure. Thank you, Bree.
This is a special police officer appointment for Ronald Clark until June 30th of 2018. Police Chief Pat Dillon says Officer Cox is retiring as a part-time officer at the end of August, but he's requested the appointment so that he can stay involved. Ron has a wealth of knowledge of the town, an impressive resume, and is highly regarded in the community.
Absolutely.
So I'll make a motion that we appoint Ron Clark as noted until June 30th of 2018.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
I'll pass that down.
He is an outstanding officer, he's been with us for quite a long time.
Vendor warrants, Verizon 213, Protection 196, EverSource 87, EverSource 1072, EverSource 445, P3, the Public Safety Complex Consultants, $1,200.
But that's under warranty, wasn't it, the P3?
Yeah, I think, yes. This is an announcement from Old Colony Joint Transportation Committee, they're having their next meeting, August 3rd at noon. I don't think we've had a representative and really, not much of a factor for us.
Not much of a factor for us, unfortunately, at this point.
This is an announcement for Hazardous Waste Day, August 12th, 9 to 12 at the transfer station, and a listing of what to bring and not to bring. I wonder if we can get this in the paper.
Yeah, I'll put it on the website too.
I gave it to Debbie Anderson the other day, but it's past weekend, so it will be.
And you had to post it up there and all the receptacles?
It's at the Village Cafe, the convenience store, here in town, several of the offices within this building, out in the lobby, the Upland Club, just about everywhere I could get it, it's at the church.
You got it all looking door-to-door here?
I just didn't go door-to-door and deliver it.
Car-to-car at the dump.
August 12th, 9 to 12, lots of, list of things to bring. There is a list of things not to bring, which includes tires, car batteries, computers, mercury, televisions, infectious agents, prescription drugs, and syringes, ammunition.
Some of those things have an asterisk showing that we already do it at the dump. And the transfer station.
It says, yeah, exactly. These items can be disposed of at the transfer station, where a few of them can throughout the course of the year. Apparently, many of those are very expensive and that's one of the reasons they're not on the list. Okay.
Thank you very much. Did you want to say anything about that?
Just to let the board know, the way that Clean Harbors does this, they keep track of each car and they log it in at the charge, and so they deduct it. And I will be the community coordinator with Clean Harbors that day. And then they deduct it from what we've appropriated. They will reach a point, I imagine, and they'll say, "You're out of money," and then we have to close it off.
Okay.
Unless you want to give us an open checkbook and we can keep it open all afternoon. Other than that, we will have to close it off when we reach $5,000, which was appropriated at town meeting.
Can you give us an idea how, in general, what would each car, the value? I mean, it depends on what they're bringing, but...
The way they do it is, they call it a full car, half car, and a quarter car. And a full car is up to 25 gallons of hazardous material, whether that's oil-based paint or whatever's on the list there. A half car, I believe, is about 15, I think it's about 15, I've got it written down, and then, or maybe it's 10. And then a quarter car is three gallons or less. And so there's an appropriate charge, it's $50 for a full car, 25 gallons, and then I think it's 30 for a half, and then it's 50... And then I think it's 30 for a half and then it's 15 for a quarter. So they will keep track of it right there as folks bring it in and they will let me know when we've reached our budget.
So that would be if you had full cars, 100 full cars?
Exactly.
Okay.
We haven't done this for quite a while, that.
I don't, from everybody I've spoken with, I don't think we've ever done it.
Oh, we did it one time.
Did we?
Yeah, I remember the, the people, they were all dressed in the white tent suits and...
Yeah, well, Clean Harbors, it is Clean Harbors.
But it was quite a while ago.
It's for basically four hours. We're doing it from 9 to 12.
Okay.
They have to clean up afterwards and get everything done, but I would expect the influx to be heavy right off the start.
I would think so.
The word is get there early.
Right, well, right, because once the money's gone, then you're going to have to shut it down.
Exactly.
Now, would they be able to do it next year too, or is there some sort of protocol?
They could do it every week if we'd appropriate the money.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's just a case of, it's $5,000 for...
Where'd this $5,000 come from?
It was appropriated at town meeting in May.
Oh, it was, that's right, yeah, okay, okay.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
So if somebody comes in with one gallon of paint, is that considered the 25 or under?
That would probably be the, the quarter car, three gallons or less.
So two or three cars should probably combine if they just have a can or two.
Yeah.
If they can do it, that would be smart.
You know, it's, it's, but they will, they promised me, and as a matter of fact, one of the ladies that I spoke with, she happened to be in Connecticut that day. She lives on Upland Road, so she's going to be there on Saturday to help. She says, "I help the guys out when I can," so...
This would be a good learning one, then.
Oh, sure. The only thing that I caution people is that there will be no business or commercial hazardous waste accepted. If you made money off of it, well, you can take it up to their facility and break it and pay to get rid of it.
Okay.
So it states right in, in there that this is household hazardous waste. You know, the old thing of Claudine that you might have in the garage that...
Going to get a lot of cash down.
If you have any, I'll take it. It's great against hands. But, so it is household residential only.
Okay. And they're going to have a, a truck or something that all this will be loaded into?
Yes.
And they'll be leaving with it?
Yep.
Okay.
And as Mark mentioned, a lot of this, some of the things we already accept. We already accept sharps and tires and computers and monitors and things like that. So those things would be expensive to have Clean Harbors take and will we already do it.
Makes sense.
Just to clarify, those items with the asterisks, that this list has taken year-round but shouldn't be brought to this hazardous waste, fluorescent bulbs, tires, car batteries, computers, mercury products and televisions.
Right. We accept those every day that the transfer station is open.
Terrific. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, this is titled memorandum. It is from Art Morin, Police Chief, sent to Police Chief, Fire Chief, Town Clerk, Board of Selectmen and Zoning Board of Appeals. It concerns a horse show July 16th at Wolf Rock Farm, 163 Center Street, and some concerns about this. Do we want Art to summarize his memo or me to summarize?
Sure, do you want to summarize it?
I'd be happy to. There was a horse show up at Wolf Rock Farm on July 16th and there was no business permit pulled for it. I'm not sure if they served any alcohol, but certainly no one came before the Board of Selectmen to get a one-day permit if they did serve it. And they, they were parking behind 157 and 159 Center Street. So the Board of Health sent a letter to the owner of record who's on the deed, the manager at Wolf Rock Farm, the day of event comment act and several other people. I think copies of the letter are there attached. And we requested their presence before the Board of Health. Rebecca Nunes did appear before the Board of Health, I think it was the 25th of July, and we explained that they need a food service if they're going to have an outside vendor. They need a one-day food service permit. The vendor also needs to be inspected, as everyone in Plumbton is, including Cisco. And that, should that not happen, we do have the legal authority to go in and shut down the vendor and tell the vendor to leave that day. And I also explained that we will do that if something like that happens. I also mentioned to them that if they're going to serve alcohol, they need to come before the Board of Selectmen. If they need a business certificate, they need to go to the Town Clerk. And these are the things, some of the things they needed to do. And also, if it's, if they're going to have more than 200 people, they need a large event permit from the Board of Health, which includes things like portable parties, port parties and a variety of other things and inspections and so forth. And so there is another event scheduled on their website for August 6th. And I wanted to make everyone in town aware that this potential event may take place. The venue may be changed, we're told from an outside organization, but people just can't flaunt the law and do what they want in our town. And I wanted to send it out to everyone. The fields behind 157 or 159 Center Street were absolutely full of vehicles and trailers. I rode by there. And I don't believe anyone had contacted the Police Department or the Fire Department prior, meaning anyone from Wolf Rock Farm. It's, it's a big event. I don't know whether the Fire Chief wants an EMT onsite. I don't know his rules. I'm certain that the Chief of Police would like to know that there's a big event going on in town. And none of that was done. We heard about it, the Board of Health heard about it early Sunday morning and I called dispatch and made them aware of it so that they could contact the appropriate individuals and police and fire could take care of it from there.
Do we have a, a package, like a, you know, that we could, when somebody wants to do something of that size that we could hand out to them that says, here's the rules that you have to follow?
We, in the Board of Health, we have a, it's called a large event permit.
Okay.
And that would be for things like a corn maze, a potential motorcycle rally, you know, with hundreds and hundreds of people, because there's a lot that goes into it.
Sure.
A lot of inspections and, and, so yes, we have it. It's, it's an entire package. But the problem is people need to come in.
You have to know about it first.
And ask, you know, what do I need to do? Which most people, most event organizers have.
Yep.
Not in this case. We just, we just have it and that's that. And so I just wanted to make, again, all the boards and everybody aware that this might take place and...
So they're on notice that you're expecting...
They're on notice now, yes, so...
And then you expect them to get a permit?
Oh, I certainly hope so.
Okay. Now, is this, is this by law or is this MGLs?
As far as the Board of Health is concerned, it's Massachusetts law. And that, that applies to every Board of Health. You need to be, your food service facilities need to be inspected. And, and we do everything in town, whether it be the candy counter at the convenience store or Cisco's multiple kitchens or the Denet School Kitchen, all of it. That's the law. And if you have a one, a one-time, you invite the plum tomato to come and cater your, your event. They need to have a one-day food permit and be inspected by the health agent. So, yeah, even the hot dog vendor at the Denet School, that was, I think, a couple of years ago. But again, they're selling foodstuffs and...
When the town administrator comes in, would that be something that they would do to pull not just Board of Health but also Fire, Police, or would you want to take on that? So we have a complete package?
You know, we're, right now, we're doing it because there's nobody else to do it. And, and that's the reason I wrote the memo, is to make everybody in town aware. I made Mr. Carling aware this afternoon that the individual wants to open up a real estate office at 159 Center Street. It's, afraid not, it's not zoned for that, but there's all kinds of construction lumber and everything in the driveway there. So there's another headache that's, that's coming down the tracks.
Art, is this something that's on the website that we can put on for you? But for a large event application and requirements, would you like it?
I believe if you go to Board of Health, it's, it's there.
Okay.
Just...
We'll put it on for you if you...
Yeah, and, and we modified another, we didn't write this all ourselves. Why reinvent the wheel? We modified in other communities.
Excellent.
And, you know, it works for other communities, so it'll work for us. But, but there's a lot to it when you're having that many people, you're having a large, large crowd.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One more related piece in this, the next piece of correspondence is a request for legal counsel from Town Clerk that apparently the business certificate for this site was deemed invalid because it wasn't the owner that signed it. It was the owner's representative. She's been in contact and nothing's happened with it. She attached, she actually made a copy for each of us, described the situation. So they do not have a valid business certificate at this point. She's unclear, she attached to the memo I've just given you, Mass General Law regarding this that seems to me pretty clearly states that the, the real name of the person doing the business is the one that has to be on the certificate. In any event, her particular question is whether we're satisfied looking at that law or whether, in, in feeling that she can deny the business certificate or whether we feel like she should go to town counsel.
I had a brief discussion with Tara about this and I suggested, to make her feel comfortable that we ought to give her a half hour to go make sure we know what we're talking about. So I would say we go in the...
I totally feel like we should not have her in the frying pan on this side. We've got enough pieces to this that are on there, so...
Especially since it's this, you know, it's custom.
All right, I'll make a motion that we authorize the Town Clerk to contact Greg Corbo from Copman and Page and he'll, if he can't answer a question, he'll point her in the right direction to get an answer on the business certificate.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Art, what's the threshold, when something becomes a large event? How many people?
200 people.
200 people.
200 people or more.
At one time or over the course of...
No, at, at one time.
At one time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Again, some of the things, you look at, whether it be the Upland Club or corn mazes, it's easy to get a couple of hundred people there if they have a function type of thing. So, yeah, it's 200 people or more.
Great, thank you.
The, the other thing with the, with the permit, I would just remind the board that we have, to use a union phrase, past practice, in that if someone comes in looking for a building permit, the first place that permit goes to be signed off on is the tax collector's office. If the property taxes are not paid, it goes no further to any other board.
And you do the same with your large event permits?
Yeah, it would not, they, they would...
Would not be granted if there were back taxes?
Now, there is no bylaw for that in this town. And Tara has researched it with other towns, so that's something that we urgently need a bylaw on is if the real estate taxes are not paid, you don't get your permit.
No other permits will be issued by this?
Exactly, yep.
I'm not sure Amy's going to take that up with the review committee.
Bylaw Review Committee. Perfect. Do you have anything else, Art?
No.
Very good, well, thanks for coming in.
Okay, Plumbton Express, main thing is the Centrefold Denet Elementary School art camp. Beautiful stuff going on there. Art teacher Catherine Holmes, who apparently is not only the teacher but the photographer and goes to the last page as well. And then the only other item, the Zoning Board of Appeals, which is a board that sometimes has nothing for months, has a ton of hearings coming up and we thank them for their work.
Absolutely.
And with pleasure, do I report that that completes correspondence?
All right. All right, so dates to remember, we are meeting every Monday in the month of August at 6:00 PM. We're also meeting with Bylaw Review Committee this, this Thursday, right? This Thursday at 7:30 PM in, I think in a small meeting room, wherever. Where are their meetings? That's where we'll be.
7:30?
7:30, yep. And then, because we wanted them to be able to get started. I don't think they start until 7:00, so that way they can kind of get organized and...
Is that right, Amy?
We do start at 6:30.
Oh, you do start at 6:30?
Yep.
Okay.
You want us there at 7:00?
Well, I think we're posted for 7:30.
I think they said 7:00.
But we can see how, we're posted, that's when we can go. And then we've got a townhouse communications meeting with Board and Commission Chairs. We've got five people that have expressed interest in meeting with us on August 9th at 7:00 PM and Rich Bowen will be here to help guide us. Board's goals for coming year, financial management, still waiting for Monica to provide us with the draft, the final draft of the financial documents that Collins Center has been helping us with. I think she's just working on that, all of the background information, because everything else was done. There is a lot to it. So that's what we're waiting for on that. Public safety?
They met last Wednesday. The recording wasn't up of a day or two ago. Soon as it's up, I will be on it.
Okay.
It wasn't recorded.
Oh, yeah, that's right, it wasn't recorded. Carley was upset that it wasn't.
I'll have a report by next week.
And the...
Okay.
So they were in apologies.
Okay. Technology?
I think basically, what I updated you on, on the exchange server last year, last week is where we are, so...
Okay. And grants, I haven't heard from Heidi. John suggested we bring her, try to bring her in to see if she'll talk to us about her program. And the options were that she could have some students work on a grant program for us or she offers instruction on finding grants and writing grants. I think it was $50 an hour or something like that. So we'll work to get her in here. Anything on volunteers?
Not this, no. Well, the whole thing is...
Well, and all of the people that have stepped forward and are helping us up with, with these interviews to get ready for the, the town administrator is, we're very grateful for your time because everybody's very busy and thank you for doing that. ...for doing that. Um, minutes, I think we're gonna hold those, no minutes ready for tonight, from 7:24?
You should've got them there, the shortest minutes I've ever written in my life.
Oh, you know, we did, I thought that those were from...
Your minute was only 32 minutes.
The, um, okay, all right, that's right.
Take a look next time.
All right, let's hold those. Sorry, Bray. Um, all right, anything else, before we get to rants and raves?
Um, no, there's...
Nope.
Okay.
Grant permit applications. Bob would like to rewrite.
Okay.
We had somebody ask for one.
Well, we only had one active one with Jeff Randolph, correct?
So it was the first time, they thought they'd come in, fill out the application, and then tell us how many keepers guards and everything else, and I said, "No, that's not the process." So then when I spoke to Bob, he had the gentleman speak with him.
Okay.
And ours was so generic, didn't ask a lot, we went to some other towns, and Tom Millias was very nice and sent us Halifax, one, to Bob, would like to look at that...
Sure.
And redo it. It's one that charges 25 cents per...
Keep a guard?
Guard, and just, and we didn't have a lot.
Okay.
And the application fee was, I was $50, and that was kind of it.
Well, you know, that's something that we talked about looking at before, actually in your meeting with, um, Kathy and getting permitting, that our fees were out of line.
Right.
So, um...
One town was 300.
And I thought Bob was gonna make some recommendations to us.
Well, this sounds like this is gonna be one of ours.
Goodness.
Okay, so you guys will work on a form, and then you'll bring it to us for approval, because we sign off on these?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
And any other fees, but, you know...
Okay, that sounds great.
We liked that a lot.
I'm sure that's all...
And it gave you the requirements of each department to go to.
Perfect.
Like I knew I just couldn't say, "Here you go."
Okay.
I knew that planning, I mean, the building department.
Okay.
So that's right.
Excellent, good, thank you. Amy, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I know Linda Letty had attended, um, a regional conservation commission meeting and found that a lot of the things we don't even charge for, other towns are charging a lot for, so I think there's a lot of opportunity where we're not really in line with the surrounding towns, that we could be collecting fees and we're not.
Okay, yeah, that's...
I agree.
Yeah, well, that is something now that we talked about when you were working on streamlining the permits, was the, the need to look at our fees. So maybe when the town administrator comes on board, we can test them with, with that as well, could've done their list.
Even the, um...
Yeah, all the list.
We had somebody come in and want the permit to go door-to-door to solicit, and they were in shock because ours was 10.
Yeah, it is ridiculously low.
To the company, not even per person, a day.
We should make that the highest one.
Yeah.
$1,000 or something, so we don't get bothered.
You can't afford it.
Our one-day liquor license, if, 16, it's, that's another, I looked at, wait, somebody, I'm in a group, and they will send you looking for things, and us...
Well, you know, maybe you could even do that, Bray, one of the town administrators on board, do some research for them.
One of my things, Charlie.
Yes, yeah, is that...
The fees, our fees are so low.
Yeah, and then we could look at changing some of our fees to be, to be more in line with, um...
If we took a look at each of the five towns intentions on us, and just see what they are, put a little schedule together, get them up.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the process is for changing the fees, whether it would be something that would be in the bylaws, which there might be some, because some of these are in the bylaws.
Um, well, those are, I know on the Board of Health, there was a hearing process that we went through, and we raised all of our fees, um, and advertised it in the paper and...
Sure.
You know, so forth, and, and just went forward, that was two, three years ago, because we were behind the times also.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, we'll take a look at that.
It's a constant, undercurrent out there that, you know, we don't enforce anything. And so this would be good stuff.
Absolutely. Okay, yeah, I think some of these might be in the, um, the bylaws, and other ones might, you know, just be the, uh, the department that, uh, charges them. What do you think?
Maybe we should act, I think a good question for Rich Hall.
Ooh.
Yeah.
Well, let's start the list for the night. How would we go about implementing changes to our fee schedule? Okay, all right, awesome, good suggestion. Okay, um, rants and raves, you ready, Mr. Trainer?
My rant is, why do I always start first?
Well, you wanna mix it up, because this was your idea!
Okay, I have a rant, and it's for Karen Foye, who does, now Plimpton, helping Plimpton. I know if you go back in history, there's a lot of things that people said, "Well, it was kind of, you know, bashing," but that's long gone, and I think Karen does this, I think she does a very good job, and I think one of the things we need to, we've talked about, is when the town administrator comes on, is having a social media focus.
Presence, yes.
And that's certainly one that we could look to, to go out to residents. So, Karen, well done.
Excellent. All right, um, mine is kind of a rant and a rave, and, um, yeah, once again, we're, you know, there's issues with, um, not having enough personnel in, um, in fire, it's just kind of the nature of the beast that we're losing people to other communities, and it just, this fire study, fire EMS study is coming at such a great time in, um, to help us, guide us, what's the best way, and I can't believe that this is just a Plimpton problem, I think it's much larger than that, because other people are obviously losing people too, you know, that are going to these towns where they're filling these positions. So I don't know what the answer is, whether it's multi-towns combining for, um, for fire, looking to go to a county system, it just seems like something's gotta change so that we can provide better services to our residents, because we're all just struggling to keep people.
I do know Warren's been, you know, actively, aggressively pursuing this, uh, he's hired a number of people, so we're keeping our ALS certification still. But as I understand it, you know, all the towns are having this problem, partly because the Massachusetts state law, they raised the certification requirements, which made it more difficult, and so departments, you know, we know that Halifax lost a number of people recently, you know, either east or west Bridgewater, one of those was, so, it's, I think in the study that will help us to focus exactly how we move forward.
Yeah, and he's doing a great job, and it's tough when you're competing with other towns that pay more money, and there's more opportunity in these, um, other cities and towns that surround us, that, uh, he's, he's making the best of what he's got.
The thing I hear is that, I'm not sure our pay schedule is that far out of whack now, we just raised it at the last town meeting, but some towns are offering health benefits of 80%.
Oh, wow.
And we had a police officer who was well thought of, Lee, because of that, went to Hanson, I think.
Hanson.
But I've also heard that because it's become so expensive, I think it might be Marshville, that now new hires, they're doing it at the 50% rate.
Okay.
So, it comes back and bites you, it's very expensive.
My gosh, yeah, it's very expensive, no doubt. Who do you have?
Let's see, so my rant is, I missed the shortest meeting last week that we've had in a long time, how did that happen? My rave is not fully formed, but I've been out of New England for most of the last two weeks, and ended up in conversations about town meeting and citizen selectmen, form of government, and people were in awe that it actually works. And, uh, in kind of an awe of the sort of pure democracy of it, that a, a really interesting style, and, um, and maybe a little peculiar, and, um, it's in New England, so something to be proud of, and glad to be part of.
Very nice. All right, so, unless we've got anything else, if you can, you all set?
I'm set.
Are you all set?
Aye.
All right, all right, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Thank you.
Y'all in favor?
Aye.